I'm gonna do the invocation. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for all the things that you do for us. I want to pray today for all the people that have been affected by this new COVID. It seems to be a little less serious and that's your work and we know that. I want to pray for all the soldiers overseas that keep us in the position we're in today to have this democracy and be able to do what us commissioners do up here. I also want to pray for this commission. I think we had a really good year and I think all these commissioners have have the people and this county in their hearts and minds and they want to make it a better place to live. And I think we're accomplishing that. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Okay, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We would like to remove item number fourteen, physician description planning technician. And we would like to add an item related to update on the joint City of Lake City Columbia County Utility Advisory Committee meeting.
Okay, we'll do that update when we were going to do the other one that you just took out.
We can do it at the end.
Yeah, at the end. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda passes. Okay, we have the committee appointments. We got a PowerPoint here with it. I'm gonna have them email all of y'all with your committee appointments. They're right here behind us. If you want me to read them off, I will. Or if you just want to look at them and we have the other one too? I think I think we I left a lot of them the same guys because Ron's been doing a great job. He's he's on the on his committees and so has Rocky for sure. Everybody's doing it. You're doing that with the with the broadband and all that. It just I just hate to take somebody off of a committee that they're in in and getting the work done. And it's just I don't think it would be a good thing to do. So a lot of the committees are repeats, ones you've had before. I just think the jobs are being done so well, it'd be a travesty to take any of you off of them. We good? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Kirby?
Hey, you gotta do it now.
Oh, okay, okay. Make a second. We have a motion to adopt consent consent agenda and a second. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
All opposed? Mr. Kirby?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. A few items for consideration this morning. At your last meeting, we discussed the intersection of Watson Street and Oval Terrace. At that time, I advised this board that basically the only way that curve was be able to be corrected was the acquisition of property. This board requested me to do an accident history at this intersection, and that's what we did. We did a ten-year history. At that curve, we had four accidents over ten years. At the intersection of forty-seven and Watson Road, you had twenty-one accidents at that same timeframe. So based on accident history, it just does not warrant the acquisition of property to straighten the curve out. Now, I'm the first one to tell you, the same time of this writing, I got a texted a picture of where it was obvious a vehicle missed the curve and run up through the woods. But I did what this board asked me. Based on accident history, there is no reasoning to acquire property at this time at this intersection.
I I think basically what's going on, Kevin, I think you agree that most of the accidents happen and they don't report it. They just pull the vehicles out and go ahead and go on with it.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Ford, I want to echo you and I and previous commissioners of this district. We've been inundated with this request. I'll stand by my position. The only way to straighten the curve out is to acquire property. Accident history in front of us today, especially with the fact that you have twenty-one accidents right down the road at the intersection of forty-seven and Watson. It just does not support what would be required to repair what's out there today.
I agree with Mr. Ford. There's probably a lot more going on that's not reported. However, you know, eminent domain is something I take seriously. I don't really like doing it.
I don't either.
And 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 that's why I asked for the the actual facts of what's on paper, what they got, because this is not going to go up in front of a judge. And this is what a judge is going to look at. And I don't think you've got a case for it based on what's actually on paper. And that's what's that's what's going to look at. That's what they're going to look at when they decide this.
Commissioner Witt, that's why I put the twenty-one accident history right down the road. I think common sense prevails. If you went up there and said, we have this problematic curve. The world needs to come to an end right here and we've had full accidents. But judges will look down there and say, well, guys, my goodness, what have we got right down the street right here?
Yeah. Is there a full-way stop there now?
Three-way.
Three-way?
We just put the stop signs up.
Which has been argumentative. Some people like that. I'll I'll stand by my position. The only way you're ever going to straighten the curve out is acquire property. But the facts will not allow, in my opinion, will not allow that at this time. So with that, Mr. Chairman, my recommended motion is accident history does not support the needed property acquisition at this time. We will continue to monitor with this board's permission. If that accident history changes, I will be happy to make sure we monitor and bring that back to this board. Mr. Ford?
I agree with that, yeah.
Okay?
Any more discussion? Have a motion?
We don't need a motion.
You don't need a motion?
No, sir. I did what I was asked. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. I was requesting an update on Cypress Slate Road and Charles Terrace. So let's just kind of capture the summary. October of nineteen, we got a grant for two point seven million dollars. December of twenty, we made contact with twenty-five affected property owners. Once again, acquisition of property. Six of the nineteen owners have obtained legal representation. One of the five on Charles has obtained legal representation. September of twenty-one, we did execute a supplemental agreement to support the nine hundred five for fiscal accounting and transparency. Our attorney as well as our acquisition agent has continuously been working to acquire the property. We are roughly three hundred thousand dollars expenditure at this time on these two projects. So I'm requesting this morning board's direction to remain motionless or to proceed with acquiring property. So very much like we just talked about the last project, right? We are in a standstill, gentlemen. We have negotiated with all but six of twenty-five successfully on one project. We like one on Charles. So very like and similar to what we just discussed on Watson Road, you are going to remain stagnant as we have for the last several months. Or you are going to take the next step to acquire the needed, a few needed properties for these two projects. So you roughly two point seven million dollar grant. You've expended three hundred thousand dollars to date. The next step, if we're going to move forward with the project, is to acquire the property. So I am requesting direction of what you want us to do on the staff side moving forward.
Mr. Chair, I think this one's a little different in talking in talking to Kevin about this already in the week is that in the in the first case, you know, in the case with Watson, she she did not want to give a property, did not want to go to eminent domain. And I think the general feeling is these property owners have acquired lawyers because they wanted to go to eminent domain because they think they can get a better deal. And so if if that is the case, then I say we move forward.
The history, Commissioner Witt, of the last several months, our attorney has worked fruitlessly. Acquisition agent has done the same. Once again, common sense works. Nobody will tell you that on paper. But I think the evidence is you're either going to do that, or I'll be up here four months from now giving you the same update of where you're at today.
Yeah. As you know, I'm not a dirt-to-paved conversion guy, but then again, my area is almost all urban. So I understand. And I'm not eminent domain guy, but but when the DOT grants you two point seven million dollars and you spent three hundred thousand, and I think everybody there wants this paved road, I I think this is a is an example of, like Toby said, I'm with him on that. It's it's an example of when it is, you know, needed. So I I don't want to make I don't want to make the DOT mad either. I don't want to turn down money from the DOT because they help us a lot. Go ahead, Ron.
I I I I don't I don't know how we get where we are. Because I thought a few years back, we had a policy that said before we ran into this one time before we had money tied up for years on roads that where the money was dedicated for a road and we couldn't get the right of way to do it and had to end up using eminent domain and and it the acquisition of property costs so much until it it was outrageous. I I thought, Mr. Kirby, that 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 time we said we will not allocate any funds to a road until the property is acquired in advance. And I think DOT is requiring that now, aren't they?
Yes.
Fund any road, if it has to be property acquisition has to be done and property has to be a hundred percent owner of the property needed to construct that road before any funding is assessed to it, right?
Commissioner Williams, you're exactly right. We have to remember, these road projects are requested basically five years in advance of when they are awarded. This will, in my opinion, will be the last DOT. I want to say that very carefully. This will be the last DOT-funded project, dirt-to-paved conversion, that's on the books prior to that policy. So when we were awarded this, when we submitted this project six or seven years ago, that policy was not in effect. That policy exists today on the DOT side of things. Now, we I want to make sure I'm very clear on that because we do do dirt-to-paved conversions on the county side of things, right? We have not implemented the same policy that we DOT has, for lack of a better word. Let's remember, DOT covers many, many counties. So DOT experienced this exact situation in other counties. Other counties opted not to go through the eminent domain process, which spun a problem. Your DOT went through all the effort, as Commissioner Hollisworth indicated. Here we are, funding, going through this effort, competing with all these other counties. Counties bump into problems and then we don't want to file eminent domain. But that becomes very problematic on the DOT side. So the DOT, the last few years, said, okay, guys, moving forward, do not submit a dirt-to-paved conversion until you have the property acquired. Now, let me tell you where that can get a little tricky. So in the future, say, we, the board directs me to submit road X dirt-to-paved conversion for DOT funding. Okay? Remember, until you're awarded your grant, you cannot capture expenses inclusive of surveying and engineering, right? So if this board directs me to submit road X DOT funding, maybe maybe not get it, five-plus years in advance, then I my job is to go back, get surveys, engineering, provide a conceptual drawing. Historically, that costs eight to ten percent net worth of a project, right? So if you've got a million-dollar project, that's low these days. I'm going to request this board, which will be non-reimbursable, a hundred thousand dollars for a project you may or may not get. Once you get that, then you go obtain the properties. You acquire the properties. Check the boxes. Now we're going to spend another couple hundred thousand dollars. So then you might have a shelf-ready job that you've expended three or four hundred thousand dollars or more, whatever length of job is, that you set on a shelf, may or may not get DOT funding for. So it's a game changer. It eliminates a conversation such as this. It does that. Now, on the county-funded side of things, right now, we're working on three dirt-to-paved conversion county-funded projects. So far, we've been very successful. All three of those projects were acquiring the property. We're not at a hundred percent. So I don't want to confuse any board member. If I'm up here one day saying, we got a dirt-to-paved conversion, out of fifteen properties, we've secured fourteen, we have one, and somebody says, I thought we solved that problem on the DOT side of things. If my memory's right, this is the last project we got that we possess. It wasn't under policy.
And and board, I just want to say, I understand some of these frustration on this road. We had a town hall meeting. We told them all we needed sixty foot. Next thing, it went to seventy foot. Then it went to eighty foot. So, you know, these people are frustrated because the other end of this road is paved with fifty-foot easement. So, you know, I I I can understand some of their frustration. But at the end of the day, we've got to pave this road. And like I told them, I I told you what I I give them the information I was given. So I don't know why it's up to eighty foot. I really haven't never received an answer on that, but it is eighty-foot easement now that we have to have on a DOT road a dirt road DOT is paving. And, you know, when you go from sixty foot to eighty foot, that's probably a bit more property you got to buy.
Commissioner Ford, I I'll repeat what I said about the five-year increments. As we go down this path, the DOT is funding the project. We have to follow their rules. Their rules do as traffic volume increase, et cetera, rules increase. Things do change. That's out of our control. We do what we're told.
That's what I told you. I don't have any trouble with it.
At the end of the day, board, kind of similar to the last subject, you're either going to acquire five or six properties in question that have been legal representation obtained for, or you're simply, you're not moving forward. And that's where you have to
I I think in the future, the way to mitigate the situation you that you discussed earlier is that we don't we still submit projects to DOT, but we submit projects to DOT that we're willing to fund ourselves should that funding actually fail in the end. And then that's the way we're going to have to do business in the future.
Correct. Good point.
I I I and I I I I don't know the the difference between the North End and the rest of the county. In many roads I've paved over my 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 tenured time, Commissioner, every road I've changed, I have not had to pay one penny for profit. People donated. They want the road paved. Yeah, Commissioner Witt, you paved my road. We are donating property. We're working on on a double run right now. The rest paved, the rest is a double run. And of the six parcels, four of them already been donated, and the other two, we haven't been able to catch up with people yet.
Commissioner Williams, you're exactly right. I reported to him yesterday that four of six has agreed to donate. I buttoned that up yesterday. We just we haven't been able to track down the other two folks. Commissioner Williams, while I'm here, I did reach out to our acquisition agent to try to help me with those two parcels.
Well, in the future, Ron said that, made that statement many, many times in the last twenty years, and and he's right. And and Rocky went out there and made the effort to meet with all these people. But I guess in the future, we're just going to have, it could be up to eighty feet. Because I agree with Kevin, you know, as the rules change over a five, six-year period, you know, you you can't sit there and you know, me and Kevin talked about that road going Little River, not Little River, but whatever that spring is out there. You know, you got a pine tree from from here to Joel from the edge of asphalt over in Swan County. You know, and I know it was DOT funded, but how they swung it, it don't really matter to me. But like Rocky said, it goes from sixty to eighty. That's that's a lot of acreage. And and but, you know, Ron sat there and said that, you know, he he's been very, very successful and and, you know, because I think it's a benefit to the people. But while I got the floor for just a second, Commissioner Ford, one of your constituents reached out to me last night after our other meeting on Charles Road.
I talked to him.
Okay, the because he was saying that, but he he wasn't in agreeance, you know, but I'll leave that up to Rocky to deal with him, you know, as far as domain.
Yeah, I'm going to talk to Kevin about that after.
Do we have a motion? Oh, oh, we got somebody that won't speak.
No, that's on a different topic.
Oh, it's a different topic, okay. Oh, we have a motion, Phil?
I make a motion. We move forward with acquiring property.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Attorney, that's official for you.
Yes, sir. What'll happen, gentlemen, is just like with Watson Road, there'll be a proposed resolution on the next board agenda that'll lay out which parcels, the legal descriptions, and ask for authorization to proceed in eminent domain. Do understand that there is a process. I have to send out the demand packages. Fortunately, if these folks are represented by counsel, that might speed things up a little bit. But we'll get the clock running effective with the next board meeting, assuming you adopt the resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My final issue, private road assessment options. So if this board recalls here a while back, let me back up. Before a while back, we always had a private road assessment program. We've not been real successful with it. So then we came up with a private-to-public road program. We've not been real successful with that. I'm going to speak on behalf of Commissioner Ford. I totally understand his frustration. Why is that? For one, he has over fifty percent of all the dirt roads public in his district within Columbia County. He also has the vast majority of private roads in his district. It just is a problematic issue for that district. So he reached out to me, and I'm here this morning to work real slowly through this, and I do not want to confuse anybody. Today, we have a private road assessment program. How does that work? A petition must be created and signed by over fifty percent of the affected property owners. Permission must be obtained from one hundred percent of the owners. When one and two are complete, we assess the roadway and determine upfront capital cost to repair the road and bring it to accounting standard. That right there is the problem. And I'm fixing to show you an illustration of that. Section B is easy. Access the roadway and determine annual cost for routine maintenance. Let me stop. So if we go in there, we say, okay, guys, after all this is done, which is hard to get all that done, we go in there and I'll show you a picture. Here's an upfront capital cost of what it takes to bring it up to a county standard dirt road. Once you do that, that just scares them to death. Once you do that, you want it quarterly, monthly, annual, biannual, et cetera. B, does it scare them? The county then will compile fees, valid affected owners, over seventy-five percent must vote yes. So in a perfect world, all that has to happen. Uh-oh. This today, based on our LDRs, is what a county dirt road must be brought up to. So you have stabilized subgrade, you know, minimum lime mark bearing ratios, rocks, shoulders, et cetera. All that right there, when we tell somebody it's two, or three, four, five, whatever length of the road is, multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars to bring it up to look like that, that becomes cost prohibitive. That's why, if my memory's right, we've only been successful with two projects in all these years that have been captured under this program. So we have been approached regarding option of providing residents a cost-only grade and maintain the road. So we know how we got there. We know why it's not working. It's simply cost prohibitive in the constituents' mind. So Commissioner Ford says, Kevin, what would it be like if we provide a cost-grade road? That's easy, and it's very limited on cost. Well, that's a positive thing. And do I think this will be very successful? Yes, I do. Now, what's the negative sides of it? So I'm here in front of this board. Before I go any further, I support another option. I think we need to support it with ginger. What would be the problems? So if we go out there on road X under this option, grade road, one would logically assume the next day when it comes to hard rain, because it doesn't look like that typical, where all the ditches go, et cetera. If it blows out, I could see where, if I didn't quite understand the details, county, y'all come back out here, roads tore up again. Well, that's not the program. I can also understand if brother lives on road that was successful on a private road program, capital cost, maintenance cost, but it doesn't look like that, so forth and so on. As simple as the girls in the office taking work orders, road blows out, go fix road. We find out later on, I mean, there's just too many moving parts. Whoa, that road actually is grading only. So there's a lot of moving parts. But if I were Commissioner Ford, and I live it with you, I completely understand if you don't give this option. He has over two hundred miles of private roads. We are paying for the sins of the past. We don't do private roads anymore. But we are inundated in his district in particular. Commissioner Williams, you have some too. This is a reasonable option. On my side of things, it's a fifteen-minute deal. I can base it on FEMA rates. We know how long it takes to grade a road. What really made me go here with this is a particular road on the table today has a lot of drainage issues. But it works today. It works today. You can go out and grade it. You're not moving water around. If I were to construct it, even if they were willing to go through that capital update for hundreds of thousands of dollars, I would have to do an engineering study because I'm going to displace the water. It's out there in the Cypress Slate Road area. We have all the hills and valleys and water problems everywhere. They don't have water problems now. They just got a bad dirt road, right? Well, nobody graded it. So what prompted this option on the table, along with other things? I said, Commissioner Ford, even if they went forward with the capital project as it is today, we're going to go out there and reinvent the world, engineering, cross train pipes. Y'all know what I mean? It was just problematic. So I'm seeking direction, and I will say I support this option, but I support it with caution that I might be up here a year from now saying, goodness gracious, guys, we just got ten roads and everybody's inundating us because once we grade it, then it doesn't look the same in a week. They're fussing and carrying on. I don't know what the future brings. That's where we're at.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kirby, why wouldn't you, in your in your estimate of what it's going to cost to maintain the pavement, put in there some cost for those extreme circumstances where when it rains and the road blows out, you got to go back and grade it? Why don't you include that number in your overall cost to maintain the road? I mean, you look historically, how many times you go back after a rainstorm? And add that to it?
Okay, okay. First of all, we're not paving, sir. It's completely dirt roads we're talking about.
Yeah, well, I'm grading, grading. I said paving. I misspoke.
Okay, so I'm not I'm not an accountant. But the way this works is, we go out there, let's issue round numbers. If we decide we're going to grade a mile of road once a quarter, right? And we determine that cost is three hundred dollars a mile to grade the road, right? So if we got one mile, whatever that math is, twelve hundred dollars annual, that gets added to their tax assessment, right? I I'm not an accountant. I I have no idea how you would capture that variable cost. This has been asked from people. I don't know how you would capture, I don't know how that billing would work. Does that make sense? So you've got a fixed cost. If we go out there and the person agrees, one mile, once a quarter, that equates to twelve hundred bucks a year. There's twelve residents. That's a hundred dollars a year to your tax bill, right? That's over with. We know what we're doing. But for all of a sudden, the phone ring, and let's do it more frequently, I don't know how you would capture that on the accounting side.
But why wouldn't you just add into that fixed call, into that number of times, you could say, if you're going to grade once a quarter, and we're going to add two more emergency emergency gradings to that, so you're actually going to get six. I mean, why wouldn't you do something like that?
I I comprehend that. You could capture that on the front end. Then on the operational end, I'm depending on a huge staff. It's doable, but I think it's got a hose in it. So I'm now depending on staff. The staff doesn't stay there forever. So I've got a rotation of customer service representatives. And so I'm supposed to go to road X. I know I've got a fixed cost once a quarter. That's easy. Then, by the way, we've got two optional visits based on what you're requesting. And then we got an accounting procedure internally, because we already have went out there two additional times this year. We can't go back out there this year. Is that, am I making sense?
Yeah, yeah, but I I understand exactly what Mr. Witt's alluding to too also, but on a sixty-foot right of way, and you're right, the the costing curve is going to be, you know, quite high. I mean, and you're saying, and I know you, these aren't hard numbers, Kevin, but we'll just call it three hundred dollars a mile to grade. Doubling the cost to six hundred dollars a mile for them four times a year, I think it's worth the effort to put it on a one-year trial and see how it works out. I mean, because you're you're chasing a ghost here that we don't know. You know, we all know what it's like in a rain event. But even to Mr. Ford's defense, you know, he he's inundated with them. I think every district's got a few of them, you know. But my whole point is that it's still substantially cheaper than going the route that we got designed right now. I mean, you you see what I'm saying? And and I mean, that's And, and I mean, that's just a suggestion.
Commissioner Murphy, I'm very open-minded about this and I support it. Where I'm trying to get my mind around is once a person pays a fee, they have a tendency to expect a profit, okay? So once we go out there and say we're going to grade it once a quarter, for example, right? Irregardless of what that cost is, if somebody comes up here at this podium and says, ah, by goodness, I can't drive down my road. I'm paying a fee. I just need direction. Here's what we signed up for. We're doing it once a quarter. I'm open-minded about it.
I'd say, you know, you, you, your contract says once a quarter, in the event of a rain event, you know, you, you got to put some kind of verbiage in there. But I, I don't think there's a perfect contract that you can design because I mean, these are untethered waters we're going down. You know, I, I think it's worth a try. And most especially in Rocky's district, I think it would be, I, I don't know that you're still going to be, correct me if I'm wrong, Rocky, I, I don't think we're going to be totally inundated.
I don't either.
You know, but there, there's some roads in Rocky's district that, you know, I wouldn't drive now. They, they got some bad situations down there.
Commissioner Williams?
Kevin, here is the, the unknown. If a community entered into an agreement with the county and pay for having a private road maintained four times a year. The only thing that we have to worry, you have to worry about, if it's four times a year, and you got that cost of what it costs to do it four times a year, and then they, they, they got assessment paid for it. I guarantee you, every time that road get bad, they're going to call you, tell me you've got road graded. So that's the problem going to be right there. Big rain come, I need my road graded. Well, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not grading but four times a year, every three months, or every two months, or whatever you agree to do on, on the assessment. That is what you're going to have to work to get around. Because once the county equipment goes on, you got that contract with the county, with that community. Every time a road get bad, they're going to want it graded rather his four times a year, like the contract calls for. When it get bad, they're going to want it graded.
And Commissioner, you might be right. But there again, if you have a contract and that's what they agreed to, you got a contract.
Yeah.
That's more than what is getting graded now. Right now, they're getting no help. They, and they're still getting the same rate events that we're getting right now. So I mean, if you, four times a year is a lot better than zero times a year.
They're still getting what?
They're still getting the same rate events that you're talking about is going to happen, you know, later on.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, we're fortunate. It's the first of 2022. If I may, I'll make a recommended motion. We follow the exact same steps with the 75%, that entire methodology. We add this option for grading only in lieu of the capital project for a one-year trial basis for the year of 2022. I'll provide an update in January of 2023 of how it's working. And Mr. Chairman, if this board so inclines, I think that's a reasonable motion to try.
I'll make that motion. We have entered contracts with private roads.
And I'll second it for discussion.
Comment, comment. Kevin, on, on that, you, you, when you go evaluate a road, you come up with a cost to maintaining that road, however, how many times they agree to, you analyze what that road need for, for you to be able to take care of it. If it's full of big dills and, and washouts and all, won't that be part of the cost? Or you got to fill all that in?
No, sir. The option that I'm putting on the table, my mindset is this. If we say four times a year, we simply go out there on a motor grader and blade what is there, period. So next January, if we're doing, and we stick to our guns, whatever the contract is, it's blading the road, no more, no less. And if we're inundated, well, you did it, but two days later it washed out. We're going to say, we're sorry, you're under a contract.
No, I'm not talking about that, Kevin. I got some private roads in my, in, in, in my district that you have to take a four-wheel drive to drive to. If they want that road fixed, and you give them a prize, that will also include, that private also including bringing that road up where you can maintain.
Sir, and that, that's right here is what you're doing in your case, okay? And that's what you're going to follow, this exact process with that exact situation. That's still going to be in place. That option's still out there. What you're talking about, the truck with the four, the road with the four-wheel drive, this process will still be in place. I'm requesting through y'all's motion, a, a third step, another option to grade the road. And my process is, the year of 2022, we'll exercise the third option if this board so approves. Next January, I'll be able to come over and say, we stuck to our guns. That's going to be cumbersome. Well, Commissioner Ford, if this road is successful, and we graded, they agree to once a quarter for X amount of dollars. Well, they called me 27 times. By goodness, this isn't working. Sorry, sir. You did it four times a year. We graded it last month. We'll see you in a quarter. I'm going to document every time people upset about that. We might not have anybody upset. Come back in here in January, that third option worked well, guys. Or guys, we got to delete that option. That don't want to work.
And, and some of them might want it graded 12 times.
We're going, we're going to leave it wide open, Mr. But Commissioner Williams is, what he's describing is still an option.
Yes, right.
Bring it up to speed, then grade it. I'm offering an option to eliminate the capital side. And when I say maintenance, grade the road, not fix anything.
We ain't bringing lime rock or gravel or nothing.
We're talking about a 250,000 grader going down a road at $15.
You're just going down with a grader and scraping it. That's what I seen though.
Do I have a motion on this?
You do.
Murphy, second. One, this will have to be adopted through ordinance. Your private road assessment program is implemented through ordinance. So I'll have to do an amendment to the ordinance. It's not a problem. The 100% of permission threshold, all the property owners are going to have to agree to it. So even though we're changing a lot of other things, I, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding. You're still going to need permission from everybody to do it.
Mr. Attorney, I want to strongly emphasize, that's why I said, the only thing that changes here is that additional sentence that says option three, if you may, grading only. All the other process stays the same.
Mr. Foreman, that's why I say I still don't think you're going to be inundated with this because you've got to get 100%.
Yeah. And I, and I'm just putting that out there to, 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 to expand on that point. And then the final thing is, these are all charged through special assessment. So it's not really a contract. It's an assessment. So it may not be January of '23 when we know the full scope of this. So I think what, what I would recommend is go ahead and amend the ordinance, create the third option, you know, between the private, the public road, and then private road assessment program. Now you have this new grading program. Instead of committing to January '23 is the update, I think we can figure out when a year is going to be. That's the only one thing I wanted to clarify is that it won't happen tomorrow.
And the only thing I'll say is we're beginning of your new year.
Following up on what y'all says, because it is an assessment, it would be on next year's tax.
So when do you anticipate us being able to proceed with this?
I can prepare the draft ordinance, doing the amendments, and ask for an adoption hearing at the next board meeting. And then I have to advertise it. So probably the second meeting in February for adoption, which would put it into.
Then we'll have to go through all the process, Commissioner, as indicated right here on the screen, get us to where we need to be.
Any more discussion?
I have a motion in a second. What?
Add a op, mayor.
Option three?
Add an option three.
Motion is to add the option for the grading on the private road assessment program?
Yeah, he's, they're telling me to go prepare the ordinance. Is basically what's happening.
So you, you going to call more button?
Well, I mean, do we need to call for a vote with him doing the orders? Do we need to wait?
No, sir.
For the direction, go ahead.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank y'all, gentlemen.
Thank you, Kevin.
I have a presentation by Mark Essing.
Hello, fellas. And ultimately, Commissioners, I would, I just wanted to come here and thank you all for your sponsorship of the Founder's Day. And I wanted to give you all a little certificate and a poster and some of the buttons and things from Founder's Day to say thank you. Just want to pull these out to make it a little easier. I'm sorry I didn't do this earlier, but of course I, I live in between here and Tennessee. So this was the first opportunity I had to do it. What I'll do is I'll call your name and just, and then recognize you and I'll bring you your poster and I'll bring you your other things. I did want to thank you. Your money ultimately helped to go to pay for the fireworks. I, I did actually do a festival on about a $13,000 budget, which is kind of crazy. And of that $13,000, $10,000 of that dollars went solely to the fireworks. And the lady that did the fireworks, I mean, if you were there that evening, she put on an incredible show. In fact, she did things I, I have never seen in a fireworks display. There was this one part where she had like this rainbow effect of all these different fireworks that went like this and a wave back and forth. Never seen anything like it. She did a few other things I've never seen. And it's, it's your money that ultimately helped to, to help to pay for that and to help to make that happen. So I'm, I'm very grateful for your sponsorship. I think it was a great event. It was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun for both the volunteers and for the, for those who came out. It was almost all based upon volunteers. I've, I've never done anything quite as large. And I worked with about 20 different civic organizations. And getting with those civic organizations and having them participate was, was interesting. It was a lot of fun. And I think it was actually one of the first events where we've had so many different civic organizations involved at the same time. It's also the first event that's covered all the parts downtown. So like I said, it was a fun way to celebrate the 200th anniversary. And I'm, I'm very, very grateful for your sponsorship. So I'll call your name, I'll bring you your poster. You have a little grab bag here. The grab bag is just postcards that were made of all the different events, some buttons, a few things like that. Your certificates, I did put this, I put this little logo on it. And I'll, I'll give you a little history on this logo. This is actually the 1880 immigration logo for Columbia County. And so Lake City and Columbia County had the, so had a little alligator that said Florida and Lake City and Columbia County above it. And they didn't really have a Chamber of Commerce at that time. They have what were called Boards of Immigration. And that Board of Immigration would encourage people to come in and settle in Lake City. One of the funny things about the Board of Immigration is that they actually sponsored this arch when you were coming into Lake City. And it was a wooden arch. And it said, all the men are sturdy and handsome, and all the women are beautiful. So when you came into Lake City at the time, that was one of the things that you would have seen. As I said, thank you. And when I call your name, I'll, I'll come and bring you your certificate. So I have one for County Manager, Mr. David Kraus. Thank you for helping to make this happen.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. I have one for Commissioner Rocky Ford. I do want to thank Rocky because he actually came in and he read the county proclamation. I want to thank you for your county proclamation. He read the counties and of course then Mayor Witt read the cities.
Thank you, Chris. You've done a great job with that.
Well, thank you. And I'm glad you were able to come out.
Yes, sir. Wasn't missing.
Commissioner Ron Williams. Thank you. And I was asked to ask you if you could call Neri, or Philip, or Leela, or myself to talk about the dedication of the Richardson marker. I think they're going to dedicate it on Saturday, February 26th. And they, they want to talk about yours and the county's participation. Thank you. By the way, I, I have to commend Mr. Williams's son, because Ron Williams Jr. brought his church and their praise group. And I got to tell you, they blew the roof off of the Darby Pavilion because I, I was really blown away at how, how amazing they performed. Commissioner Robbie Hollingsworth. I want to thank Robbie for coming out as well. I, I think he had a good time. Thank you. Commissioner Tim Murphy. Thank you. Yep. Commissioner Toby Witt. Thank you. And I also want to thank, I believe her name is, is it Kenny Roberts? Is that her name? Is that right, David?
Kenny Roberts, yes.
Yeah, she, she helped me gather a lot of the bios of both then the, the county officials. So she helped me, I, I published her little bios on the Lake City group. And just to say thank you and to honor you and to recognize the work that you do. Because I think a lot of people don't realize all the work that you all do. Not only then on the, on the county commission, but in, in your volunteer work in daily lives. And I think that's important. So again, I want to thank you all. I am, let me make sure. Sorry, that, that one's for Terry Phillips because she helped to co-sponsor it. So I want to give her. Is there anyone that I missed? So I do want to thank you all. I am very grateful for your sponsorship and, and for coming out and helping us celebrate the 200th anniversary of the first settlement. And hopefully, we can, we can work together in other events in the future that we can recognize different events and milestones and, and things that have happened in the past. And I think history is important. And I think it's important to recognize those who've come before us and, and what they've accomplished and what they've achieved and what they've done. So thank you very much.
We really appreciate it, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
David.
Thank you very much. If I could, before we, before I get started, I do have a procedural issue, Mr. Chair. On the consent agenda, item number seven, there is a Scrivener's error. The pay grade should have been 116 instead of 110. If that's okay, like I said, it's, we view it as a ministerial matter to make that correction. We just wanted to bring that to your attention. If you want to bring it back up, we can. But it was just somebody mistyped zero to a six, or six to a zero.
Which one was that?
Which one?
Number seven.
Item number seven, crew leader position. They mistyped the pay grade. They typed it, I believe, as a 110, and it should have been a 116.
Oh, okay.
So it was just a clerical error. But we didn't want that to go through without you knowing that.
I don't think there's any problem with that. So noted.
All right. So now we move on to fun stuff. So your financial advisor has retired and closed his business. So we need to find a new financial advisor to help you as we move forward. Our purchasing agent, Mr. Donnell, has done his research and he's recommending we piggyback on the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners, RFP, which was with a group called Public Resource Advisory Group. At this point, I'd like to recognize Mr. Wendell Gratner from Prag to answer any questions you might have.
I'm not sure I call this the fun stuff, but my name is Wendell Gertner. I'm a senior managing director with Public Resource Advisory Group, otherwise known as Prag. And I appreciate the chance to introduce myself and my firm to you today. Prag is a municipal advisory-only firm, just as Galahoun Financial Services. All we do is provide municipal advice. We're a national firm. We've got five, five offices across the country, and I manage the Florida office. We've been in business since 1985. Here in Florida, we've got five advisors. We work throughout the state from Miami-Dade to Escambia County. We work throughout the state from Miami-Dade to Escambia County. We have an average of about, I guess, a total of about 100 years' experience among our advisors. I myself have been doing this for about 30 years in public finance, mostly in Florida. And I actually started my career working with Jim Galahad back at Raymond James back in the 80s. So we would appreciate the opportunity to work with you. As you know, our role is really to help you meet your financing needs in the most efficient way possible. We've got a lot of resources to do that and look forward to the opportunity to work with you.
Glad to have you on board. Any questions, board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the contract with Public Resources Advisory Group.
Second. We got Mr. Lillker to talk about this. We can motion in a second for discussing. We got a second, right?
Yep.
All right, Mr. Lillker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I looked at the agenda last night. Been a little busy with the city lately, so a little tied up, and I noticed there's not one bit of supporting information in the agenda package. So I went and looked up the firm. There's no doubt, these guys are the number two firm in the nation when it comes to doing municipal bonds. But if you do a little bit more research, you'll see there's a bunch of other firms also that do the same kind of business. We're just a small, little rural county here. I don't know why we need the number two firm in the nation. I don't know. I didn't see anything here to see if their rates are competitive. Maybe the gentleman could tell you. Apparently, you guys weren't interested until this evening. Well, this morning, I'm in a time warp here. But I'd like to know why there's no other information in here. Not one word about this firm. If any of you looked at this agenda package, you wouldn't have any idea who these guys are if this man wouldn't showed up today. And I know that Mr. Knoll's been around a long time, and he knows what he's doing, so that's not the issue. The issue is with this board. Either you need backup information in your agenda packets, or you don't. And if you don't do it, then you need to take a look and see what's happening at the city, because that's what you're gonna turn into. Half the time, their stuff gets walked on into 12th hour, and everybody's familiar with what's going on across the street. So my suggestion to you guys is, and that's the city manager, the county manager, he's the one that finally approves it, and the county chairman, is that you spend five minutes and look to see what kind of supporting information is in these agenda packets. And finally, I would just say, I know these guys must be smart, this stuff is really complicated sometimes, but there's a lot of other firms, and I would ask again to know how competitive their rates are. Because when you start doing these bonds, this stuff starts adding up really fast, and maybe there's a small municipal firm out there, like this is a small county, trying to get some traction that could also use the business. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lillker. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
The next item, if you remember several months back, in May, the U.S. Cold Storage came to your board and asked you for an economic incentive package based on an expansion project where they were adding rail and going to expand their facility by a third. The board at that point said, yes, we should do 100% tax exemption for three years so they could do this. We've then gone back to the legal process of actually developing the Economic Development Agreement. At this time, we're asking you to approve the Economic Development Agreement that went with that vote back in May.
Some movement, Chair. Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
The next order is a change order at the wastewater treatment plant at the North Florida Mega Industrial Park. As you know, we're going out to bid this month, and we're expecting to be accepting septicage in the beginning of 2023 with final closeout towards the end of summer 2023 of the entire grant. We're working with DEO on those terms of the grant right now. But as part of this, the project changed over time. So originally, there was gonna be a temporary spray field south of the prison system. When they went out and they did the soil sampling, that did not work, so they had to renegotiate with Weyerhauser for a new site for the spray field. So now the new site for the spray field is actually on the west side, or the east side of the prison, much closer to US 90. So they had to go out and do data collection, find the location, design the new spray fields, all of which has been accepted, and we're finishing up the permitting process as we speak. Additionally, we talked to them about leachate, or leachate, depending on how you want to pronounce it. We've always wanted this plant to take our leachate, so we don't have to ship it everywhere. We think long-term, that'll save us money. That additional cost of the design is about $30,000. And then finally, the advanced wastewater treatment plant, or water, you know, reuse water, deep well injection, those projects were never part of the original grant. We went out and received a second grant to cover those projects. So the design of those two projects were also completed in this change order. The total cost of the change order is $110,000 to cover all those changes, most of which are completed, and were performed in good faith. There are two that were not completed yet, and that being the leachate and the design for the advanced wastewater treatment. The reason we wanted to do the advanced wastewater treatment, in all fairness, is the rules and regulations change. And this will put us in compliance as we move forward with the rules that are now coming out with DEP in terms of treatment. If we don't do this, we're gonna have to come back and do it again anyway, because the rules for treatment have changed, the criteria have become more difficult, they want better quality water going into the environment so that we can protect the rivers. And so straightforward, we're asking you approval of the change order.
Some movement, Chairman. Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Next one is RFQ 222022A. This is an engineering contract. This is for the water line that could run from Ellisville to the town of Fort White. We had two proposals. We had a committee that ranked them. North Florida Professional Services received the number one ranking, and so we're asking you to give us, to approve the final ranking and authorize us to negotiate a contract with North Florida Professional Services for this project.
Some move. Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All for 10. Oh, okay.
You must need to go fishing.
Slow down. I got so many from you, Steve. Steve, you wanna, you wanna make a comment?
Oh, go ahead. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I was looking at this tally sheet here. Looks pretty good. Arcadis is a top-rated firm, not exactly the good old boy firm that North Florida Professional Services is, but it's a, it's a good firm. North Florida Professional Services does a lot of small county work. And I don't know if any of you looked at this tally sheet in here, but you know, there's been instances in Columbia County where people are being strong-armed to use North Florida Professional Services. You may not know that, and some of you may. But what concerns me about this tally sheet is Mr. Kirby's numbers. I mean, these are pretty close. These are both competent, these competent engineers. And you look at Mr. Kraus, he's just off a couple of points. And you look at Chad Williams, the county engineer, who had Arcadis first, he's just a couple of points. Then you look at Mr. Kirby's, and you kind of wonder exactly which skating match he was looking at. He was in the same park. He's not even close. I mean, a lot of times, we know how these bids are done. Somebody comes in, they got a friend, so people agree. One person votes to one person, the other person votes to the other person. And I'm kind of like really curious, with these two competent firms, how Mr. Kirby could be so far apart. And I don't know what the ethics policy is without looking at it, and this is something from Mr. Foreman, but a lot of people around here have been around a long time, and they have friends. So if, if Mr. Kirby has any sort of personal relationships with these folks, and I don't know if he does or not, I'm not accusing him of anything, but this is just so outrageously different that I think this needs to be looked at. Because Mr. Kraus, college graduate, been around a long time. Chad Williams, an engineer, and Mr. Kirby knows roads. We all know that he knows roads. Knows asphalt as good as anybody, from what I understand. But these numbers, this number is really skewed. So I'm not really happy with this, and I would just like an explanation, or maybe you guys could get an explanation, because you're gonna be approving a pretty big contract. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lillker. We have a motion in a second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kraus.
Yes.
We want you all finished with the negotiation and all with the, with the, with the top right company. I would like when I come to the bill of the credit for pass. So we'll know at every stage through the year where we are, and make sure we meet those timelines on that credit for pass. It's important to the board and important to the citizens of Fort White and the government down there.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And in terms of the rankings, each individual ranker does it independently. They don't talk to each other till we get in the room and discuss it. We did discuss the two rankings. Both firms are excellent firms. You could not do wrong with either firm. I think they both can do a great job. At the end of the day, this was just the one that won the ranking. So the next one is Building Inspection Services, Swanee County. For medical reasons, Swanee County temporarily does not have a building inspector. Thoughts and prayers go out to their building inspector. So they have asked Troy Cruz to continue the building inspections on the two rest areas on I-10 until they get a new building inspected. And so what we're asking is for you to authorize Troy to do the building inspections on the two FDOT rest areas on I-10.
Somebody says all he's doing is the two rest areas. He's not doing the rest of there.
Right, but because he is going to have to work in Swanee County, we felt it was important for the board to authorize that work.
But David, for clarification, he's already inspected one in Columbia County. It's the additional one in Swanee County.
Right. They want him just to handle all the rest areas at this point.
It's just another quarter mile down the road, but he is already presently inspecting on the one down in Columbia County.
I make a motion, we allow Troy to continue doing inspections on the Swanee County rest area also.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Finally, the rescheduling, not finally, the rescheduling of the first meeting in February. Here, you can see that the BEDC, the Business and Economic Development Council of the Chamber of Commerce, it's a collegiate Chamber of Commerce, is hosting a Columbia Day in Tallahassee on February 3rd. I know there are several commissioners that would like to go to that event. That is also the day that you would have your normal first meeting in February. So we're saying that this is a day that you will go and have meetings with legislative officials, elected officials, state agencies. There'll be a reception, and they really requested the Board of County Commissioners to join and partner with the business community of Columbia County in putting our best foot forward and advocating for the county at the legislature on February 3rd. So if the board would like to attend, we need to move the first meeting in February.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we reschedule the, the meeting to February 10th, 2021. 2022, sorry.
One question, could you add the time that you would like the meeting to be held?
First meeting?
Yeah.
Be an afternoon?
Um...
Is that correct? Morning or afternoon?
It's the first meeting, so it'd be a morning meeting, to clarify.
So you want it to be at 9:30?
Yes.
Okay. And we will prepare a resolution for the next board meeting to make it official. We just want to make sure that that was the wish of the board.
Need a vote on this?
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
All right. The next item is proposed 2022 holiday schedule. Typically, Columbia County recognizes all federal holidays. The federal government last year added a holiday, Juneteenth. So we're asking the board to officially adopt the 2022 proposed holiday schedule, which includes the federally recognized Juneteenth.
Some move. Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Oh.
We're just gonna have you come up and speak before everything. Come on.
After all, of course, too. Trying to keep it straight, Stu, it ain't working.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I guess the only commissioner that recalls Good Friday, be putting on his calendar, be Ron Williams, he was the only commissioner there. I didn't have a chance to look that up. It's a religious holiday, it's not a federal holiday. That was a split vote when it was approved last time. I'm in favor of Juneteenth, that's a federal holiday. Obviously, I'm in favor of all federal holidays. Somebody wants to take a religious holiday off if you believe in separation of church and state, which I know a lot of the Trumpers believe in, and some of you up there, that Good Friday is not a national holiday. If somebody wants to take Good Friday off, the argument last time when Juan Williams was there is, they have personal time off, and they can take their time off. But everybody doesn't celebrate Good Friday. Some people celebrate it maybe a little bit more than others, and this is clearly a religious holiday. If you're gonna do that, you should take off Ramadan. I don't know if there's any Jews in there in Columbia County, you might want to do some of the Jewish holidays, which they're closed for in New York City. But there is no reason to have Good Friday. It's a paid holiday for everybody in Columbia County. It's, quite frankly, it's un-American. So I would ask that that be taken off and Juneteenth added. Thank you very much, and I would like to hear some debate on this.
It's, it's interesting that, that you oppose Good Friday because it's a religious holiday. Do you always, do you also oppose giving Christmas and Christmas Eve off? I mean, no, I mean, you can't have it. I mean, and un-American, America was founded on, on Christian principles, so I mean, well, I'm just, there's no debate. I, I think... No, he's not saying Juneteenth, he's, he's bringing up Good Friday.
No, it's not a religious holiday.
I mean, and there are many holidays that we take that the federal government don't take. The federal government only has eight or nine holidays, and we have, I think, 12 now. So it doesn't always coincide.
And, and, and the courts automatically be closed that, that day. The courts, the courts recognize all federal holidays, so the court system will close anyway.
Well, I think the purpose of holidays, too, is to take care of our employees, and there's a vast majority of our employees that do celebrate the Easter holiday and, and enjoy having Good Friday off. So it is. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
And then the only other thing I have left, since we took the planning technician off, is the update on yesterday's utility, joint utility advisory committee. So we met yesterday at 3 o'clock. It was a long meeting, good discussion. We are, I'm seeking direction from the board. My understanding of the board's wishes is that we are to move forward with utilities, work with the city where we can, and where we can't work with the city, move forward anyway. So that's the direction that we are taking, that we are going to continue to move forward on getting the utilities in for the North Florida Mega Industrial Park. If we can work with the city, we will work with the city, and if we can't work with the city, we're still going to move forward aggressively, because we have a timeframe. We want to be able to provide water service at the same time we provide sewer service in 2023, which means we're going to have to make decisions quickly. Having said that, Commissioner Ford brought up yesterday at the joint advisory committee that we should look at again a utility authority. And there was a lot of healthy discussion about the utility authority. The advisory board was like, or is going to request, or is requesting, to meet the 31st of January in a joint city-county meeting, hopefully in this building, to discuss a regional utility authority, and what that would mean and how that partnership would be formed. Again, we've got decisions to be made. Our plans are to move forward on all fronts, to make sure that we will have a utility when we need it. This is one of the fronts that we will also move forward on, but we're also gonna continue, if this falls through, what would we need to do. We're not gonna use this as a way to delay us from getting done what we need to get done. Having said that, because the advisory board yesterday asked to set up this meeting, the timeframe is short. I need direction from the board. Do you want a joint meeting? How do you want to move forward from this point forward?
And we also stated in that conversation, David, don't forget that this meeting will, needs to be set up to where we can take action upon discussion at that meeting.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. This is a special meeting of both.
David, let's give a little back, background on what, what actually was said. Okay. Everybody knows we got the, uh, consumption use permit for the water, 2.1 million gallons.
2.1 million.
Alright. It was brought up at the meeting yesterday that the city wants to pump our, the water for us through their wells and sell us the water at the cost determined at a later date. Now, my statement was, I, I'm not agreeing to that because, I mean, we worked hard to get to where we're at. And then, you know, we're putting, we're putting the city right back in the driver's seat, depending on their wells, far as I'm concerned. Now, they wanted to talk about how that agreement would look like, what it would look like, what the cost would be. Um, and, uh, basically what I said, if you want to partner with the county, you need to do it through a utility agreement, through, through a regional utility or some kind of utility office, that, or something. Not start intermingling, we'll pump your water, we'll do this, it's your permit. I, I, I don't believe that's ever gonna work, myself. Oh, now, I'm one member of the board. Y'all can talk about that and look at it how y'all want to look at it, but, uh, that's kind of where it all started, so.
So for specificity, uh, what Commissioner Ford was talking about is, again, we're going to proceed as if we're not working with the city. At the same rate we proceed as working with the city. What this proposal would be is we retain ownership of the consumptive use permit. It's our water. We would use their wells rather than drilling new wells, and we would only pay for the treatment of water, not for anything else, not for lines or whatever else. It's a lot of negotiation, it's a complicated deal. It may not be the right decision, as Commissioner Ford said. But we don't want to delay our moving forward on the other options while we pursue this option. And so that's, Commissioner Ford's right, is this something the board's even interested in?
Commissioner Williams?
I, I, I get a little emotional when, when, when it comes to, when I got a company that's sitting in Glenn's office, this board got a company that's want to move Columbia County. And, uh, they want to be here, we're the, the top of their list, and when we start talking about utilities, we can't provide it for them and move on. They go somewhere else. Now, if I got a, we've been, I, uh, Murphy, it's on his second, third term, right? Second term.
Second, yes.
So the rest of you guys are new. I, I, I've seen this happen for 40 damn years. Forty years. We don't have the utilities to put to a company that want to locate in their community. We finally got a, a commission with enough balls to say, the hell with it, we ain't taking it no more, and we not gonna lose any more businesses in this county. The anymore businesses leave this county because we don't have utilities. And we took the initiative, the board took the initiative to do something about it. And I'm a darn, if, if the city want to come along with us and work with us, that's fine, but if they don't, we gonna, this commission are moving on. This for our citizens, and, and, and not only for Columbia County, for Northeast Florida here. This last company that was here, Glenn and David are telling you, they want to be here 1,700 jobs. 1,700 jobs, and we didn't have the capacity for natural gas. That's how natural gas came about. Talking about finding a way to find out what it takes to put natural gas to that side. If the city can do it, so be it, but if they can't, we gonna move on. Columbia County's future is extinct.
I agree. Y'all know what I've been working for for three years now, and, uh, I'm not willing to give it up at this point, just to save a few dollars on the water.
I, I, Ron, I've been here the least amount of anybody, and I can't imagine y'all going through the stuff you've gone through for all these years, dealing with, with the city on some of this stuff, and, and the old adage, if you want it done right, do it yourself. And we work with the city where we can. I, I, I haven't been here very long and haven't had a whole lot of experience with the city, but it didn't take a whole long time. I've already, I'm, I'm on board with y'all with this, and I, I think that the people of Columbia County don't need to be, don't need to wait anymore. You know, we, we waited 30 years, we need to get this, we need to go on and do it.
Well, that's exactly the reason why, when myself and Commissioner Ford and others were in that conversation yesterday, it's time that everybody gets in the same room, because just as Mr. Williams just stated, you come to an agreement, if you can agree, you do. If you don't, you go on and go your other path. But, and, and, and it's got to be contractual, because I feel like what has happened, been part of, I've only been here for five years, but sitting in the audience for many, many years, you know, it gets bogged down behind the scenes. But that's why I say put all, currently nine of us in the same room, where we're looking eyes to eyes. You make your decision, you stand by your handshake agreement and put the ball in motion. But, because what happens, what has happened in the past, as I stated in the meeting yesterday, it's a known fact. The current utilities directors, the past and the past before that, have all simply stated, showed their frustrations on the city's side that the city government in the past 30 years has used a utility funding as a slush fund. When they get in control, that's the first place they go dip. So this is the perfect opportune for all of us to get together and nip that in the bud, which is gonna lead down to the road, is exactly what Mr. Ford said yesterday. You call it a Utilities Division, you call it Regional, you call it whatever you want to, but ironically, we're gonna be heading that way. You know, it, it's inevitable. In order for the future of Columbia County to continue to go down the road, this is our best effort yet. And work when we can, when we can't, do whatever our, our other options are available, but use the resources that we have in play.
Mr. Chairman, we're not just heading down that road, we're there. We have formed a Regional Utility Committee, it is up and active, it is, we have asked the city in the past to be a part of it, and they have declined to have anything to do with it. The city had its own cup issues and its own uses issues, and yeah, it makes sense to work with the city where you can. I-75 is a perfect example, they got infrastructure right there, it makes sense to, to use that infrastructure. But in these outlined places in the county, they have already proven to us they can't perform, and we're better off doing it ourselves. We've, we've, we've got millions of dollars in grants from the state to move in that direction, and, you know, we're there. So the fact, they're talking about a regional utility now, when it's, a year ago, we asked them to be a part of it, and we went ahead and formed one with Fort White. We're, I mean, we're there. So this 11th hour meeting they want to have, unless they want to come on board as part of the regional utility, I don't know why there's any discussion.
Man. And, and, I heard.
So in other words, what this board is saying is move, keep moving, the direction the board gave you. And then if, way we can work with the city, we will, but we don't, we not gonna stop and have to start again.
Right, no. Our plan has always been, we are going to move forward on all fronts, because now you've got the cup, it's decision time. We have to pick which route we're gonna go, and we gotta get started if we're gonna have water by the, by 2023.
Well, it, it makes sense to me at the, at the mega site, if the mega site's gonna become what we all think it's gonna become in the future, that it's gonna exceed the capabilities of the city. We're gonna need a treatment plant on site, and if that's the direction we're willing to go, then that's the direction we need to start out in these early phases of going.
And, and it's like I told the city yesterday, it's to y'all's advantage to do this. It's not to our advantage. We're gonna move on, whether, either way. But it is to your advantage to do this. You're sitting there with a maintenance nightmare with, with utilities. Y'all robbed dollars from it for years, and you've got a maintenance issue now that, I mean, they have nothing to lose by joining a utility. As a matter of fact, I, I, I don't even know why it's a hard decision for them. I mean, it, it's just, I, I just can't understand why they would even not consider it.
Maybe a control issue is what I would say is a control issue, and I'm sure that all boards have that.
And you know, here's the thing, David, and I, and I'm just gonna bring this up for an example.
Uh huh.
You worked with the city all day Monday.
We did.
All day Monday, working out a solution for their building department.
Yes.
And then the mayor pulled it from the agenda with no explanation, no notice to the county or anything. I mean, that's the respect we get from the, from the city.
That is correct.
I mean, how do you, how do you deal with that? I mean, you can't take them serious. I mean, it's just, at the last minute, no explanation, no nothing, just pull it from the agenda. I mean, that's, that's just absolutely rude.
And you know, like, like happened with the water, the reason we're where we are today. Uh, the, the old thing of, hey, can y'all provide this? Yeah, them days are over. We gotta have them part of your regional utility or a contract with, with cost if you don't perform. I, I, I couldn't believe that the, the city said, yeah, somebody on the county talked to somebody at the city, and they said, oh, we can perform, we'll get you the water. And when Ron, working so hard to get business out there, all of a sudden, we can't do that. We cannot do those handshake situations, and it's not gonna work. We can handshake amongst each other, but not, not with the city, and I'm not being mean, but we, we have to cover the county, the county, the people of the counties and the city people with new jobs and all those things. We can't just go on handshakes anymore, we need contracts. And ironclad contracts with performance and with cost if you don't perform. There's no way we can do another contract with them without that.
And we have companies coming in, in the very near future, that we are going to have to make a guarantee of providing service and have a way to provide it.
Well, and you, you can't do that when governance is split, which is why the regional utility works. It, it, you know, I mean, you can't, you can't rely on that body of government to make decisions about your economic development, which is the situation we've always been in. You know, I mean, we know where that park's going, and we know eventually you're gonna need a water treatment plant out there. So let's plan on that from the beginning, which is why we got our cup and why we were already taking steps to go that direction. You know, I, I think we need to send a clear message, don't, we don't need to waste money doing studies and stuff, popping your water from the city, because that's not the direction we're going. Let's just nip, nail that one down immediately, let's nip that in the bud now. You know, and, and as far as the, the natural gas problem, you know, I've heard two solutions, and, and, and I've heard doubts whether they can, they can do it or not. And, and I have doubts whether they can do it or not, the city, the city, I mean, but there's another alternative there too we can look at, and I think we head down that road too.
Since you mentioned gas, the update on the gas is, we've been notified that we did receive the grant to do a feasibility study. Uh, we should be getting the contracts in the next day or two to proceed, um, with that feasibility study. Uh, the city has done feasibility studies in the past. This will tell us how we can get the amount of volume we need to the industrial park. And then we have to make the hard choices of how do you finance it, how do you pay for it? It does not address who's doing what. It addresses how do you get gas?
How to get that.
To the industrial park. And all these rumors and innuendos out there that we're doing one thing or doing another thing are irrelevant. We just want to know how to get gas to the industrial park. Once we know what it is, how much it costs, we can then figure out who's gonna do it, who's gonna finance it, who's gonna pay for it.
Well, I just want to say, I'm for helping the city any way we can, but they need to show us a little respect also. I mean, we're, we're doing their building inspections, we're doing all this stuff for them right now. I mean, you know, at some point, you got to try to work with us, you know?
We're in current discussions with them on combined 911 again, uh, with the sheriff's office, um, and, you know, the police department and the two fire departments. That, those conversations are going on, the building department conversations are going on. So yeah, we try to work with the city any way we can, but we still have to do, like you said, like the direction the board has constantly given us, we need to take care of our business. If we can work together to benefit everybody, great, if we can't, we do our business.
Like Robbie said, contractual timelines, deadlines, penalties, that's the only way we're gonna continue to move forward with that, is, you know, because, uh, it's just that simple.
And that's nothing new, that's, we do that, contractors, we do it, and everybody.
That's right.
So there's nothing new to do that with the city. We're not doing anything mean to them, we're just doing what businessmen do.
Yep, well, we have accomplished, we have accomplished a lot in the last two years.
Absolutely.
Going toward solidifying our utilities, and I don't think we need to let our foot off the gas right now. We need to keep moving forward.
We've got 2.1 million gallons nobody thought we could get.
Well, like Commissioner Ford said yesterday, the end game with this Utilities Division, Regional, whatever you call it, takes the politics out of it. It puts them in the driver's seat, that board, and then it's up to us as governmental agencies to supply them, you know, keep them going. But it, I think it's ultimately, I think the end game is that's, that's a, that's a better solution for all the taxpayers.
Well, it's like Tubby said, we've got, Fort White's entered into agreement with us, so we've got a utility already. The city needs to join our utility, we have a utility for the whole county. The whole county's working together for utilities.
So.
City, Fort, like City, Fort White, every county, I mean, there's a whole.
So we have the direction on how we're gonna move forward, which is we're just gonna keep going forward and work the best way we can to get a solution in time when we need it. The other thing I need from the board is, do you want to have this meeting on the 31st?
I, I'm the one that brought it up yesterday, you know, because I personally feel like, uh, everybody on both sides don't get all the information. I always say you put everybody in the same room, you know, and if it's successful, it is. I mean, that's all we're, what, that's all we're trying, get clear direction from both sides, which way we're going, how do we accomplish what we're doing?
Well, in regards to the, in regards to the, the, what brought this discussion, the intermodal part, I, I think, you know, we probably need to get everybody in the same room and just say, hey, this is the direction the county's going out here. We're gonna build our own water treatment plant, it's, it's, it's our intention to run our own water, so they can stop investing time and money and, and resources into researching that. Just take that off the table. And, and, you know, let's lay out what we're doing, so it's no mystery.
Alright, it's like people, like we used to have at PCS, let's have a straight talk meeting.
Yeah.
So I, I guess we need a vote from the board to call a meeting, a joint meeting?
I make a motion to have that, uh, bring back proposal on the 19th for the meeting, where we do the proper advertising, and have the meeting on the 31st of January.
I'll second. You got a motion and a second, but Mr. Hooker won't stop.
Save yourself a lot of walking if you sit on the other side of the room.
What'd you say, sorry?
I said, I, you save yourself a lot of walking, Stu, if you sit on the other side.
Yeah, well, this is an extraordinary day, I'm doing this for you, Mr. Hooker. Uh, I hate to see everybody waste their time, but if anybody's looked across the street, there is no city manager, and there's only four city council people. It's a hot mess over there. I don't think that the city can really decide anything right now. They really can't even vote, hardly, because they got a tied vote, it's, there's nobody, there's no tiebreaker. My suggestion for you guys, and I know you want to meet, but it's just gonna be chatter until they get somebody like you have here. You have two people running the show now. There's no HR director at the city, there's no city manager at the city, there's no permanent police chief at the city, there's no building planning and zoning at the city. You kind of really wonder what's in the city. So I think it's a good idea, and I agree, whoever said that, that everybody needs to sit down and talk, but there's really nobody to talk to right now, because you got to ship it out to the captain. It's like the Exxon Valdez, the guy was drunk and it ran aground and spilled a lot of oil on the ground, if you remember, and kind of screwed up a lot of Alaska. So my suggestion would be is to hold off, and at least until they get a city manager. Other than that, you, you got a city that really can't make a decision right now. And that, that, that's my two cents in this, and I've been watching this for a long time, I'm not saying you guys are on the right track or the wrong track. I think there's a lot of things in this where you really had no options. And you know, I've been following utilities since 2006 here, but I think to have a, without somebody to helm really at Lake City, you just mentioned it today, you had the stuff on the agenda that mysteriously disappeared. What's the sense of having a meeting, folks? Discuss it, do whatever you want to do, but I think you're just wasting everybody's time.
Thanks, David. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Uh, I think they were talking about an afternoon meeting, is that correct, Commissioner?
Okay. About 3:00.
So we need to set a time? Do we need to set a time in the motion?
Say 5:30? 5:30, yeah. We'll add that to the motion. 5:30, yep. We'll add that to the motion.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. All opposed.
Mr. Chair, I also would, would, would put a motion up for approval. I don't want anyone to come back two days from now, three days from now, three months from now and say, David, why are you doing this? We say full steam ahead. I make a motion that we authorize David to, to move full speed ahead on doing what we doing to provide utilities so we'll be in, in, in place to attract industry, give industry their need in Columbia County.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. All opposed, motion passed.
If I could take one more moment.
One, one more.
Oh, go ahead.
Guys, I don't know where you heard of this before, but there is a 201 plan. Was adopted in 1976. If that plan would have been followed, we wouldn't be here today talking about utility. It laid out the future of the city of Lake City and utilities for Lake City and Columbia County. And that plan was adopted and never fulfilled because of 201 plan.
By the Board of County Commissioners?
No, by, by the city.
That was their plan to be a countywide utility provider. That's when they created the Greater Lake City Utility Authority.
Well, simply that 201 plan, as we've had discussion before, it, it needs to be presented at that meeting. And, but as we've talked about yesterday, the reason why they got rid of it, you know, they went down the other lane to, to basically dilute their utility fund. I mean, here regardless whether you're for or against it, you know, 35,000 a month here, 35,000, you know, it adds up pretty quick. We ain't got enough room to, I work on Railroad Street. I know how it floods down there.
Well, that's all I have.
May I ask your indulgence for one more item?
Yes.
Easy stuff. I just wanted to remind you of the schedule for this month because it's very busy. Your board is very busy this month. On January 11th, you have the Fort White County Utility Committee meeting. On January 13th, you have the animal, for the, yeah, the animal control special meeting. That one's at 5:30 here. You've approved me to have a vacation from the 17th to the 21st. You have a meeting that week, which Mr. Kirby will be in charge of. On January 25th, you have the LTPT broadband committee meeting. On the 26th, 27th, you have rural days in Tallahassee. On January 31st now is this joint meeting. And then on February 3rd would be the Columbia days in Tallahassee. And that's not even counting the fact meeting because I don't know that any of us are going to the fact meeting. So you've got a lot of, you'll be very busy this month. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Do we have any public comment?
Chairman and Commissioners of US21, 930 Northeast Joe Coney. The first thing I would like to address is the fact to Commissioner Witt that I disagree that this country was not founded on Christian principles. There's no way in the world that the Indians would have been done the way that they were done. And there's no way in the world that God would have allowed any type of Christian principles for blacks to be treated the way they were treated throughout this American history and currently to this day in many aspects. That's one. Two, I don't believe that eminent domain and 80-plus-year-old lady property by the name of Ms. Watson is the correct path that this board need to be going down. I, I think that you're gonna find out that it's gonna upset a lot of people disconnected to that family. I just don't believe that a, a family that have been farmers that have gotten their property the hard way and people wanna take it, if you talk to her, she believed that she doesn't wanna give up her property because white people have taken enough of her land. That's her founder judgment. And I've talked to Commissioner Ford about it and I told him the way that I think he should go doing about it, but I think that he takes advice from other people and thinks of less advice when it comes from me, which is fine. Y'all wanna do it, suffer the consequences. Moving on to the last topic is the issue about whether or not you move forward with the city as it relates to economic development, consumption use and the utility department as far as water is concerned and sewer. Look, I think that both governments are playing chicken. I think both y'all are pussyfooting around. I don't think the county has the experience when it comes to water and they wanna try to get the city to where they want them to get it. I think if the county really wants to move forward, then move forward. I think that you guys stalling and saying you want them to come on board, if you think you can do it without the city, then do it. I think that you were elected to make the best decisions in the best interest of the people. And if you think you can do that without the city, then do it. Why keep talking about it? I think you move forward and call it a day. Otherwise, you're pussyfooting and you really want the city more than you're letting on. Thank you.
Any, any more public comment?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This is my last trip here today. The first thing on my little card is years ago, Mr. Foreman thought this was a good idea, that we have a report from council. He sort of liked the district attorney or something like that for Columbia County about what lawsuits the county is involved in, what litigation. I was hoping to get a litigation report on mitigation credits, which clearly affects what you spoke about before. I would ask that would be revisited while you're not as boss and he's individually elected. Clearly, you could recommend to him if you desired to have reports, we spoke about this for years and years and years. You can have them. At one time, he wasn't against it and I would like to know what's going on with the USTHOP mitigation credits. The other question I have is, is Mr. Foreman is now involved, is now Mr. Douglas's attorney involved in city business. He was previously the attorney for Mr. Douglas because Mr. Douglas was on Economic Development Advisory Board, I guess, within the last year, I guess he was there. I think I recall seeing him. Within the amount of time that Mr. Foreman, I believe, would have to announce to every other attorney and the court that he was previously Mr. Douglas's attorney. Clearly, he's the attorney of the board and I don't think he's doing it intentionally. I see he's got a look on his face and I know Joe long enough. But there appears to be a conflict there. The fact that there's not a fifth commissioner in Lakes, it's just fifth council person in Lake City. As you know, that's all been tied up in court. There was an early January date. My understanding is the only thing that held that up was Mr. Foreman. Everybody else was available and by the time they got back to the judge, that date had been taken. So I, I have a problem with the county attorney being involved in city, city business and city politics. And really, that is politics as far as politics goes. There's the law, there's the facts, there's the politics. And I, I just wanted to make you aware of that and I, and ask Mr. Foreman that if he feels that he has a conflict, will have him look into it, that he needs to announce that to the court? And that case in the city needs to move on quickly. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? Do I have any staff comments?
Do I have any commissioner comments?
Once again, I know you all get tired of me saying about, I'm very proud of this board taking the step that they're taking to provide, to, to move in a direction to provide, provide utilities so we can locate customers in Columbia County. I appreciate you guys. It takes money to do it and we are committed to do so. You guys are great.
I don't know exactly how to address this, but there was an issue last week. I was out of town fishing. Oh, got a call from the clerk about vacation time, the 80 hours of sick leave for COVID. And, uh, I, I guess there was, there was an email sent out to basically give everybody one day to, to keep this time. From what I can gather, it caused a big issue with the, with the employees of, of the Board of County Commissioners. And, uh, I would just ask that before anything that controversial is sent out to the employees, that it be sent to our county manager or our assistant county manager first. I think, I think everyone concerned knew how, how important that email was and how it was gonna affect the employees. So i- i- in the future, I just ask that all the constitutional officers respect the county manager position. And that's, I mean, I, once I got back and kinda looked into it, I got quite a few calls about this and um, I don't know if anybody wants to add anything to that, but, oh. We have a county manager and assistant county manager. Their positions need to be respected.
The clerk's here and I think David and then we've worked that out as far as I think there will be notice. Jay, if you wanna talk, tell, tell us what, what, what steps y'all made to, to make sure we, we, we let people know.
I will say that we are working on our lines of communication. The email that you are referencing was sent at, I believe, 8:45 last Wednesday. And by 12 o'clock that same day, actually, within an hour, I'd already met with County Manager Kraus and we had this issue resolved. And by 12 o'clock, an email was, another email was sent out to the county employees. I totally get what you're saying as far as communication is concerned. There were a lot of, and I spoke to each one of you individually and privately, commissioners. And as one commissioner said, after he'd spoke to some other people, said, well, this isn't a conspiracy, is it? And I said, no, this is no conspiracy going on here, but we will improve our communication. I have offered for our staff, our financial staff to meet with county staff on a, a monthly basis. That has received some pushback in, in that it would be reactive and not proactive. I disagree with that statement. I think it would be very proactive for our staffs to meet together to talk about what issues we're having versus, and what issues are coming down the line. And just to put it into perspective, I, I just had these numbers pulled and I wanna share them with you. The clerk's office performs accounting for the board's $100 million budget. For fiscal year 2021, this office, this office processed 7,490 paychecks for 350 employees in the amount of $11.6 million. We processed 18,000 invoices through accounts payable in the amount of $74.8 million. And we recorded 4,992 revenue transactions in the amount of $105 million. It takes a team to get all this done. It's not a one-man operation. I can't be involved in every decision that's being made, nor can the county manager or the assistant county manager. But communication is key through this, so we will, we will find a way to better resolve these issues in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I understand you have a tough job, don't get me wrong, but you know, on something this controversial, a little bit of care should have been taken with that email and, and before it was sent.
And, and let's, let's, you know, I, I don't mind reading the emails that, that were sent. I don't know if they were controversial at all. I understand the issue was the 150-something employees that were getting the 80 hours of, of, of leave. This, this conspiracy or this belief that, that my office put that on at the end of the year and gave the employees 24 to 48 hours to burn 80 hours of, of leave or they were gonna lose it, that we intentionally did that when we helped draft this policy, when we notified the HR department that we were implementing this early and to ask for that to be sent to the employees. And that's how it was, the checks and balances worked before anything detrimental happened. And we resolved it within hours. So I get, I get what you're saying, but I believe the process worked as it was intended.
We appreciate it, Jay. Thank you very much for the job you do, Mr. Chairman. Oh, Mr. Kirby.
Once again, as the clerk indicated, the problem has been resolved and I wanna thank him for his assistance in resolving it the same day. I do wanna paint the picture. I heard conspiracy three or four times. I never labeled as a conspiracy whatsoever, so I can only speak for Kevin Kirby. The day that this issue come abreast, let's back up a step or two. This board approved a central leave, essential blowings, the 80 hours of COVID leave a while back. We had a meeting. We collectively agreed we would implement this process on the 11th of January of 2022 to ensure there were no issues. Last Wednesday, as the clerk indicated, I was over dealing at our jail project with a very cumbersome issue. My phone blew up, off the hook, with everybody upset because of the email that was generated that indicated that leave would be obtainable in the calendar year of 2021. Everybody that's been here three or four days understood that leave could not be used in that timeframe. When I reached out to the clerk, I will, I actually reached out to David first. He was unaware of the email. He was in a meeting. I reached out to the clerk. Everybody collectively fixed the problem. We agreed that was good teamwork. After that, Mr. Kraus and myself requested moving forward with any essential problems. And we all have common sense. We're not talking about moving a line out of $5. We're talking about items that cause us all to stop for two hours what we're doing to rectify a problem. We sent out a notice, check, annual, or sick as of January the 11th. Everybody knew that, 2022, problem went to happen. Problem happened, problem was fixed. Simple solution, anything of magnitude. And I read the letter to Mr. Kraus prepared. We don't have a problem with monthly meetings, but we do request anything of magnitude be reached out through the management team to be dispersed to employees so we don't have those problems in the future. Mr. Kraus simply said in his letter, we don't disagree with the monthly meeting, problems already happened with monthly meetings. Yet, on a proactive stance, if we're gonna go against a memo that was sent out inadvertently or advertently, who knows? Please reach out because if anybody, I can only speak for Kevin Kirby, because I understand the purpose of the January 11th memo. If somebody would say, we're gonna go ahead and put it on this payroll, guys, we've already sent a memo out, that's gonna be problematic. I don't think I would have stopped what I was doing. I wanna confirm, we all worked as a team to fix it immediately. That's not where, in my opinion, the problem stopped. What are we gonna do moving forward? If the car runs out of gas because we weren't paying attention to the gas gauge, let's go fix the gas gauge we don't run out of gas in. I thought before this meeting, this problem was cleared up. I thought, Mr. Kraus, you told me we agreed, we would have conversation between the management team before we dispersed to them blow it. And I thought we were resolved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we had a conversation with, with the clerk that basically the management team will be notified on any issue that affects our employees in terms of pay, raises, whatever, prior to it being implemented. And the clerk's office was meaningful to that. And that's when we talked about the monthly meetings.
But the clerk, the clerk's office has got the act on all memos and what have you. I mean, they don't take upon themselves.
This particular instance, and again, I don't wanna harp on the particular instance, there was a decision made. We were notified after the fact, after the decision was made. So the impact to the employees occurred prior to our being notified that that decision would be made. Basically, we were notified, oh, this is already taking place.
In other words, if we're notified from now on about decisions like this, it's all a check and balance for us and for them. Now, I, I talked to the clerk and he's assured me that he'll make sure the management team knows anything like this before it happens so that, you know, this doesn't happen again, so.
And we spent a lot of time talking with the clerk this week and we were planning very much to improve the communications.
When Jay called me, I guess as well as he called Rocky, I knew nothing of this.
And I knew nothing about it when Jay called me either. And I knew nothing about it when Jay called me either.
Well, I got the phone call too. And my take on the whole situation was we made an error and the error was immediately corrected. No harm, no foul, let's move on.
But put in the, the thing where you talk to manager from now on and that, then, then that's just another check and balance toward not having any more accidents.
And we can do better moving forward.
Yep.
And my, and my comment will fix it.
And it was fixed quickly to everybody's credit. Hey, I do have a.
Oh, while he's wearing a silk suit. That's good.
Best dressed man in Columbia County. I do have, I do have a comment, uh, because it came up in citizen comments. I just want to clarify, on the Watson Road issue, that issue came before the board two weeks ago, asking whether we wanted to do eminent domain. The whole reason I asked for the actual accident history was to have an informed choice and a, a form, an informed decision on whether to do eminent domain or not. I don't like eminent domain. In, in this case, the facts didn't support it. So there is no moving forward, continue to do what we're going to do. That issue's dead. The facts didn't support eminent, eminent domain and we're not pursuing it there and we're not going to pursue it there. So just to clarify that, that issue's gone in, in regards to working with the city and whether we want to keep inviting them on board or not, we've already moved past that too. We've made it abundantly clear time and time again, my statements, this board's statements that we are moving on without the city. We have a regional utility if the city so chooses to want to join and they need to reach out to us for that. We're not stringing them along and saying we'll work with you. We won't. It's not what's happening, uh, despite what was said in citizen comments. And that's all I got.
Anything else? Got a motion to adjourn?
We adjourned.
Second.